Yeah, but they haven't given him a date. Put him off and wants to get it on.
I want us to come back and secure this.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Thank you.
First twenty five, which meeting in order, let's stand in.
The United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one invisible.
The approval of the minutes, everybody.
So we'll.
All right, you have first, you have a second. All of them favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Approval of order of agenda.
Move.
First and second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Approval of consent agenda, bills, employee sales changes overtime, and a game of chance permitted by Forks Builders Association.
Move.
We have to add a bill.
Yeah, we have to add a bill.
No.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
So you are aware, it is part of.
Okay. All right, that's second.
Okay, first and second, all of them favor the motion, please say aye.
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 Both motions passed unanimously. All right, citizen comments, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the board? Great, seeing none, we will move on to Mr. Scott Wheeler. Wait to be on Zoom.
Madam Chair, in this position, I was going to participate by Zoom, Ethan, Florida, can be on.
Not yet.
I don't.
No.
Okay, there you go. And then we go on to Mr., oh, no, just kidding, this is Terry Beerkey. Terry Beerkey, deal, Grand Forks County, twenty twenty six budget goals and priorities.
Okay, well, I'll start, we have two, let me, I got a speech for everyone. Send your sheets on your desk.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford, I've got two copies on Ms. Lee's desk for you and her.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, here, if you want one. I got a couple of copies up there, may I have one? If I got to share, send one to the back row. And, okay, you, okay. Okay. Um. Hold it. Need one back. I gave you mine, sorry about that. Oh, I don't mind. No, I can leave your result. Okay, yeah, okay.
Mrs. Nelson, could I ask you to scan it to me after the meeting?
If you're gonna do that, then I'll pass it. So who else wanted one? There we go, one, there wants one? Okay, she won't, if you're gonna scan, then we're good.
Is that Scott, that just?
Yep, it is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Wheeler, are you there? Looks like it's meeting.
You're muted, Mr. Wheeler.
I did mute, I did admit him already.
Okay, how's that? Is that better?
For, sorry.
Okay, thank you for having me today, it's an honor. It's in regards, as you know, to the seventieth anniversary of the Lawrence Welk Show's national debut. He is from Strasburg, North Dakota originally, which I understand is in the opposite end of the state from you, but I do think being a native son that was on a national television show, had a, had one for more than twenty-five years. Think that's a feat that wherever people in the state are from, they should be able to be proud of that, and being thirty-six, you know, I get concerned sometimes, I wonder how many people my age and younger are aware of the show, I think they should be because it has a wide variety of music on there, if you're not familiar, and people my age and younger have kids or are going to be having kids, and I think it's something that's pretty safe for them to feel comfortable watching that program with them, they don't have to be shocked at what's gonna be on the screen, and so I do think that even though it's been off the air and its original run for decades, it is still run regularly, as you probably know, on Prairie Public Television here in Tallahassee, on WFSU, and in other states, so I don't think I'm alone across the country and still thinking that it's worth watching and passing on. And if I may add a little bit of a additional note of relevance to your area. I know that Grand Forks County has an Air Force Base, and so I know in addition to being the third largest county in the state, which is, I would think, a pretty big honor. You also help with the National Defense and that in addition to others that I have letters of support from that I could share with you if you'd like, I have a letter of support from the former Congressman for Western Minnesota, Colin Peterson, you may know his border extended across the whole border of North Dakota on the Minnesota side, he was on the Veterans Affairs Committee, he was also the Chairman of the House Agriculture Committee. And so, and in my not, the North Coast Fest has given me a letter of support, so I've also been interviewed for two news stations about Mr. Welk, the anniversary in Bismarck, KX and KFYR Plus, and then on the fourteenth of last month, North Dakota Today in Fargo, so I have been getting interest in different corners of the state in some support from outside the state already, so I really would appreciate if you'd give some consideration to a letter of support. If I need to send you one, I'd be happy to write one for you to consider, and you can modify it as you like. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or give you more information. Thank you.
Let's give the word. Letter of support for everyone.
I'll fire him.
Yeah, I don't see any issue.
Yeah, he can send one and, and somebody consign. So it's me and Woo Woo. Who to have a letter of support and that the Commission Chair can sign.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Madam Chair, could I just ask a request of Mr. Wheeler? You had mentioned you had a template or a draft, would you, would you be okay sending that to me and I can, I can get that on a letter head into the chair?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to provide you with that.
Okay, if it's okay, Madam Chair, I'll just, I'll just quickly give him my email address. It's, it's thomas.ford, F-O-R-D, like the car. At GFcounty.org.
And it's on the county website, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so I should be able to get it to you, and I appreciate your part in helping with this. Thank you to the Commission as well. And I hope you guys have a great day.
Good night.
Okay.
Mr. Beerkey, you're up.
All right, I got some comments and we'll go through the sheet. If, I guess if someone wants to talk about something, we can, I didn't mean for this is not, this is supposed to be our ideas to the Finance Director, Mr. Ford, and the Commission Chair. Things I want you to look at, if we want to talk about it, that's up to you. I'm gonna be blunt here, I'm not afraid to step on our toes. And if I win some, I win some, I lose some, I lose some, but we cannot continue down the road we're on, unacceptable. So, and for the fifteenth minute time, I'll keep saying if the case is unclear, this is not a reflection on Ms. Nelson as the Finance Director. Their past commission made decisions, and now it's time for us to own them. So, so I'm gonna go through some comments and then I got it back, I don't have a noodle back there, and I got thick skin, so. And if somebody wants to debate it, to prove me wrong, then fire me. But we, we can't keep on going on the road. So, I'll go quick here, I campaigned on no sales tax, I campaigned on no property tax increase. And I am not deviating from that. I am not concerned at all about the caps, I am perfectly fine to live off new growth only. So, and this is, I'm gonna give out some hypothetical examples, so don't try and stick me to the exact number because it's just to prove the point. If, if we have a three percent cap and two percent of that is a value increase and one percent's new growth, I'm fine with just taking the one percent new growth. That, the system for property taxes is based on averages. So, when I say you won't get a property, that's on average, so is it theoretically possible one property might go up a little bit, another property might go down, yes. But on average, if we just take the new growth on average then, property taxes will not have increased. The state, it, well, they keep changing our idea, but at least for this year, we're still to five hundred mark. That if you file by three thirty-one for your primary residence. My goal as a county commissioner is to take none of that back, that you're gonna get to hold five hundred. That's a tax cut to you between the state and the county, want to address it, you live in the city, in this county. It's up into the city school in the park of that city, if it's the county, it's the township, the school and the fire district. What they're gonna do, but I know what I'm gonna do. And I get them one of five, but I think our goal should be a no tax increase. In twenty twenty-six, we are gonna owe approximately four million dollars in debt service. And all, if I do specific numbers, that's off documents in revenue, Ms. Nelson, it's not like I make them up. The next six years, we're gonna average three point seven million dollars a year in debt service. That does not include our six-year capital improvement plan, we have roofs, not roof, we have roofs to fix, boilers to fix, and a courthouse renovation. There's a courthouse sewage project that's a hundred grand coming up, I think that's next year, but we have a lot of capital improvement projects we have to deal with. I am, I don't pass the buck, if something needs to be fixed, we fix it, we don't shove it down the road. My goal is to increase non-property tax revenue, and that can be accomplished through the following areas. We've already addressed the jail, we're in the process of addressing the YAC. It's a leasing office space, more office space than the county office building. And we have begun the process of looking over our fees, many of which were ten to fifteen years old. And to get them current inflation. And then the other end is cutting spending. This is the beginning, I'm, I'm making a list for the next budget after this year from now, if we have to. We'll start, in my, I wanna make it clear, once again, this is me as one talking, but I I will put forth that no raise for the county commissioners, and the first budget to be cut should be ours. And I will promise the taxpayers, I will not take a raise for the next four years. I will, I'm not gonna.
I mean, this year.
I appreciate that, and I'm not gonna take one for four years, I'm fine. We need to focus on our needs, on our wants and prioritize our needs. We have a potential between the jail and the YAC of three million dollars in revenue, other revenue increases of two hundred thousand, and cuts of one point three million. And I just, this I wasn't sure on because I haven't got the data yet, I don't know if it's available yet, but new growth, say, I'm going with one percent of four hundred thousand dollars per mill will be roughly three hundred thousand dollars, and that's I gotta wait to get the official number on that, that's why I have a range, that would give us somewhere between four point five and five million dollars. Take off the COLA pension insurance increase. And I'll get to it in a while, some people will get promoted, et cetera, take that off, we should be hopefully creating four million dollars of new money, either through revenue or cuts, that's my goal. And in closing, I would just say to anyone who is upset in this county, that they're not gonna pay more in taxes. I would ask, and hopefully we'll get support, that the county create a tax me more fund. And anyone who's upset they're not paying more taxes, we will give you an address, you can send the money to the county, we will track it. And at the end of the year, we'll take that five dollars and twenty-three cents and spend it on something. So, and I'm deadly serious about this, I want a tax me more fund, if you're mad because you're not paying more, you, you can send the money in, and, and we'll have some, some kind of process to see how we spend the money. Do you have a handout? I'm gonna run through this real quick. And, and as I mentioned, it's too, I still have a whole stack of stuff I haven't gone through, and I'm still getting used. Now, you, your budget is four minute, I, I get it, fund accounting, but yours is four minute over, so I'm still studying. In fact, sometime we feature Ms. Nelson, I'll probably have a tutorial, she can teach me to make sure I'm reading everything right, but, so I, I, this is the beginning and not the end, once again. And some of these things I've mentioned before, but it's important that we, if we implement the policy this year, then it will, it will affect next year's budget. So that it's, it's part of the plan. So, I'm just gonna go in order, for the administration, which would be Mr. Ford. I've asked him to track and charge for the base retention on a quarterly level, if you travel and staff time. I'd like to see us have a list of all entities paying rent in this building, the rent paid per entity, and ensure that the leases are reviewed every two years. Some of the stuff may or may not be done, once again, don't, don't get thin-skinned on me. Don't, but if you do this already, I'm not insulting you, I'm just making sure. Okay, so, don't, please, just outside of personal feelings, this is numbers here. I think when you look at essential purchasing. The incumbent work policy where we comp time people who work on other buildings, because this building enclosed makes less than zero sense to me. So I want that eliminated in my world. If you're already working somewhere else, you know you're in a job that requires you to work in bad weather, that's your job, that's part of your job, so why we're comp timing, I don't get that. And I want to go through Grand Sky of the revenues versus expenses for buildings and grounds. I want the jail addition, the YAC, new YAC, and the sheriff's office, all included under his direction. I want all buildings and all utilities under his direction, I want all facility and all utility contracts and/or agreements under him. We have a buildings and grounds, I guess he's a manager, I'm saying make him a director, and I'll get to that down the road. I, I want him total control. The sheriff should be sherifying, the Yak should be yakking, I can go all the way down the line. The buildings and grounds, guys should be doing the buildings and grounds, that's what he's the expert at. For finance, a review of the credit card holders and policy for viewing purchases. On bills, I'd like to see if we could have a process where we could do, who purchased it? Who'd be paid, what was the amount, and what was it used for? We have that somewhat, but some stuff I have no idea what's going on. And it would just be better for us listening instead of me asking a million questions all the time. Financial statements from all entities, examples. Weed, water, soil, ambulance, we're giving these people hundreds of, in some cases, millions of dollars of money. What are they spending it on? Are we reviewing their finances? Are we getting a bang for the buck? I don't know, I don't know what they're doing with the money, but I want to find out. How is our money being spent? The Laramore and Fourborough Recreation areas, which are under the control of the water board. What are their income, what are their expenses, and what are they charging for fees? We should not be subsidizing those at county level. If they want to have a recreation area, which we're in charge of, then the fees should pay for the recreation area. So we need to work towards that. All buildings with property tax exempt. Who are these people? What are they paying now? What should they be paying? And when are they gonna pay their full amount? Because some of them are ten, fifteen, twenty years out, that should be in our budget process. At some point, whenever they come, start paying. We should be able to see, say we have three percent cap, we could be eating three percent cap every year just on new growth, once these people start paying their bills. And I wouldn't mind, I don't want to do, like this new, I don't, I don't want to debate that policy when they're here, that's inappropriate to me. It has nothing, they're following the code, the rules. But on the council, I never voted for this, and I'll never vote for it here. If taxes are too high for business that comes here, it is too high for everyone. So, I think we should have debates, Commission, if we're gonna continue to let people not pay taxes for ten, fifteen, or, or, I should rephrase that. Not pay what they're supposed to pay for ten, fifteen, or twenty years down the road. But I emphasize, I don't want to do it the night they're here, that's inappropriate to them, they're just following the tax policy, it's free. We should have that debate before then. The ramp revenue should go into a ramp fund, under the control of the Buildings and Grounds Director, only to be used for the ramp. We should, I'd like to see a plan to pay the sheriff's office building at the five-year mark. And then, the COLA, and I know you do that separately, I was reading through the thing. The, the two percent mark, I'd like to see some, how that funnels into your insurance, COLA. Pension increase, if you increase the payment, and all that, but from what I read, you'll bring that to us, but I'll throw out the two percent. For human resources, I want to continue the current hiring phase, a freeze. I like, we need to have a new payroll system in use by the end of this year, it's gone on long enough. Mr. Ford, I was reading through some notes that you gave me a while ago, did you, did you say that we're losing, gonna lose forty-five thousand dollars of revenue this year because Project Alter won't reimburse their expenses because our pay system is not up to snuff? Is that true?
That, that's the gist of it, Commissioner Beerkey, yes, it, it would have been, that was an estimate thirty-five to forty-five thousand because the, the auditors at DOD wouldn't accept the, the payroll system that we use, and Ms. Nelson could, if, if there's questions, could speak to that much better than I could, but yes, sir. Generally correct.
Is that a, is that a yearly charge we could be getting in revenue increase if we add a payroll system, correct?
If we had, yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, want to find a way to pay for your payroll system, there it is, so, whatever that takes, we can look at that. Based on what's progressed. Just at the top end. As far as more page, could be the sheriff, a jail captain, the buildings, grounds director, the project coordinator, I know they're working on redoing her. Job description, down the road will be some transport officers, et cetera, need to factor that in. There is no use trying to find janitors at seventeen dollars an hour, so we constantly, we're just wasting money and time. Frankly, I don't know why we have anyone in the county stirring out less than twenty dollars an hour. Because you can make that put cheese on a bun somewhere. So, we need to raise that up, accept the reality, and that's what it's gonna be. For those of you who are concerned about compression, go to the next bullet point. I'd like to see us have a new wage and benefit plan in effect by twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six. And get away from grade, step, longevity, et cetera, so. And this is me talking, I, I want to see that, then we won't have any discussion on the compression, but we've got to stop wasting our time trying to hire people, Mr. Gersch, you're about to make some point, we do have a great pension program. But when you're a new employee, you're at the bottom, that's not putting any food on your table. So, we've got to do better than, than that in terms of low rates. The PISA, they have approximately a nine hundred thousand dollar surplus. It looks like the state's gonna reduce their fee to two and a half percent, which means there should be some type, hopefully a local revenue increase. And so I hope we look at the potential reducing the rate we pay based on calls, if they have all that money in the bank. And if they get more money from the state, what's the plan? I need to follow up on that, and, and Mr. Ford, you should be put on a list to discuss with Mr. Phelan.
Yes, sir.
If our rates go down, then their rates go down. For what they pay. And then for the Youth Assessment Center, which is the YAC, those that don't know, and I know they're already working on this, but I just want to get out, to negotiate new per diem rates, negotiate guaranteed beds, and then at the appropriate time in the process, come forward with potential, what's that gonna equal in revenue? So we can have that in. The next page, if it's not marked. I'm looking at, I request a zero to three percent, okay, to look at that. Feel free to look at your travel budgets, under the real small ones, if we could. And I'm not gonna list them all, there's too many, you can see what they are, trying to get them as close to being what we need or not need. I'd like to see the county fair reduced by twelve percent, and this is based on, the ones I'm looking at are have lost employees. Have lost consultant fees, et cetera. The IT or computers, three to five percent, we, we didn't hire that person, so should be somebody there. The Regional Youth Assessment Center, three to five, they've already showed me that. Emergency departments, twelve to fifteen percent, because we've lost employee, and we should not rehire. And Plankton is twelve percent, we were eliminating consultant there, it was thirty-five thousand a year. And I don't know exactly what the city's gonna charge, but it's not gonna be thirty-five thousand here. For that, and then we go, continue on the general fund, the CBIC, zero to three percent, detox, ten percent. And I am for eliminating the contracts for Colonel Curry, Save Kids, Children's Advocates Center, Young Professionals. I haven't found out the Grand Force Community Service, that's why it's question mark, we'll look into that. The total savings of the general fund will be four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand, ballpark. The next is the additional levies. Road funds is point seven five mils, which is three hundred thou, I'm rounding off, three hundred thousand. Weed boards, zero three percent, Mr. Russell's personal favorite, the Historical Society, at a hundred percent. The Vets Office is five to seven, Economic Development at fifty percent, NDS Two Extension, five to ten, Health Department, five, Water Resource Board, five, Library, thirteen percent. Red River Joint Water Board, five to ten, Soil District, ten, I'm meeting with them next week, I got questions for them. I'd like to have a discussion about how much cash balance in emergencies enough. You know what, we should have a number, a total of eight fifty, nine hundred thousand, which would be a total savings of one point three to one point four million dollars to go with the additional revenue of approximately three point two, which would put it in that four point six or so. Minus, when we do the pay, insurance, and all that, I'm hoping we get at least four million dollars. People aren't gonna be happy, but I don't live in dream world, I live in real world, we gotta make, we gotta start making changes. And this is how it has to start. That's all I got, but I, we have to, we have to start looking at this, and whatever else anyone has, and if anybody, departmented employee, has got a B for A, have you thought about this? My email and phone numbers on the county website, call me or email me, happy to meet with you, publicly or privately, if you can discuss with. Not gonna hold grudges, not gonna be grumpy. Just, don't tell like it is, that's, that's how I am, that, I don't mind coming, going back the other way, show me I'm wrong. That's all I got, thanks.
We. Here's later.
Madam Chair, member of the Commission, thanks for your time today. Just to follow up your Commissioner Beerkey's comments. The increase on civil service fees, administrative fees is effective as of today, so that's a little increase on that. And I do have a meeting scheduled with one of our federal partners tomorrow morning to talk about potential revenue at the county correctional, county jail, so. I'm looking into a few things for you.
I appreciate that.
The first thing on the agenda I would. Uh, the first thing on the agenda, I believe, is, uh, I am requesting approval, permission to sign a grant award. This is from the Norco Department of Emergency Services. There was excess funding left over that was either returned or not awarded by Department of Emergency Services. Our office applied for a couple different aspects of that money. And the state issued us an award of thirty thousand dollars. That thirty thousand dollars, uh, grant award, if you allow us to sign, uh, to receipt, receive it, will be for a large-scale exercise, uh, mass incident exercise. And currently, I'm looking at that taking place either in the city of Grand Forks, in a vacant building, or if we can partner with the city of Thompson or Mandel, see if they're willing to do it, but I'm requesting permission from the board to have a signature, actually by sub recipient, on this is listed as Ms. Olson in my office. And I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Hey, the first and the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, if you may say hi.
Thank you, and just a little further information on that, uh, that grant is a quick-moving one, so we'll have to expend that money this summer. Uh, I do have a couple deputies working on coordinating that. We'll be working with a lot of our local partners, uh, emergency management and likewise. Uh, the next thing to bring to your attention is, uh, back-to-blue expenditure amount. So last biennium, the state legislature awarded, uh, first responders. Uh, actually, I believe it was just law enforcement and corrections. A back-to-blue is a monetary amount that was awarded based off of the amount of sworn personnel you had working at your entity. And, uh, we did award that in the sheriff's office. I was made aware of, uh, some of the expenditures that happened at the correctional center. And we had to divert, so what I'm, what I'm looking for today is just to make you aware that uh, some of the money was spent on items that were not approved underneath the grant. I did include, I believe it might have been the first page, is what the Attorney General sent to us as far as the award goes. And in that award, uh, and this is the copy from the sheriff's office, I didn't have the correctional center one. But it says that it's to be utilized specifically for hiring and retention bonuses and for tuition and fee payments. Um, the, uh, correctional center had spent some of those funding, some of that funding that was allocated for that on other items such as, uh, submitting machines and appliances, et cetera, to, uh, furnish the new pod and new administrative area and break room. Uh, Mister Burkholder did reach out to the Attorney General's office. He did receive a notice stating that those expenditures were not approved underneath the grant. Uh, so thankfully, I was made aware of this in time. We did award the entire amount of eighty-eight thousand dollars to the correctional center employees. I worked with H R, and we set up a scaled amount that ran similar to what we did at the sheriff's office to award the entire amount of the eighty-eight thousand dollars to correctional officer, uh, employees. Uh, with the exclusion of administration, uh, to fall in line with what we did with sheriff's office. Uh, none of the administrators accepted the amount. And we awarded that to the workers. So I have talked with uh, my administrative assistant, Michelle Olson. Obviously, we have been looking into the J F budget in the last two weeks. We have identified a couple areas that, uh, we can probably take the funding out of. Uh, I mean, it's, I mentioned a few of the items, a couple others are uh, purchases to supply the vending machines, some coolers, some, uh, challenge coins, and a I D printer, batch printer. Uh, we've identified areas that I believe we can probably cover. Uh, the, it was just under thirty-eight thousand dollars that was expended. So I'm just notifying the commission, I don't know if I need approval or not, to, to, uh, remove those items out of other line items in the budget. Uh, they're all purchased already, the ones that are listed that equal just under thirty-eight thousand. And to my knowledge, most of them are fairly customized and they're not returnable. Uh, I have met with the administration, which I'll get to in a little bit here. But it sounds like, for the most part, the staff does appreciate those items. Unfortunately, that's not what the state intended the money to be meant to be spent on, so I do believe retention of those items is appropriate. Uh, we just have to fund it out of the different. So, so if you need a motion on that, or you just give me a verbal approval. But, uh, the sheet for what the expenditures were was, is listed in your packet. Uh, along with the reports that, uh, Administrator Burkholder did send to the state, we had to submit progress reports. Um, last fall-ish, fall winter, and, uh, the sheriff's office submitted a report as well. We received no notice from the state. Um, I'm not making excuses for why we were not notified that they were not approved expenditures. But I do know that the individual that was handling the grant at that time, uh, took a job elsewhere, and they had somebody new in that position, so. I don't know if others got overlooked, I know that there were some other expenditures throughout the state that might not have been approved. And I'm guessing they're doing the same, so. I don't know if, if we need a motion, if I need approval to take these expenditures out of other line items. So with that, I guess, I mean, I, I do have, well, it's not the current budget because it's probably weak and apple, but we have identified some, some areas, including, uh, building improvements, furniture and equipment, and, uh, some specialty supplies that we could probably take that out of, so. That's what, that's what I'll do, and I'll work with Miss Olson on that to make sure that it's out of the right line items. Uh, the next item, I guess, I had on the agenda, there's no questions on that, is, uh, I wanted to provide the commission with a jail update. And the reason for that is because I was assigned to take over the jail effectively immediately, the last commission meeting. And so I figured I'd be fair to provide you with, uh, what the sheriff's office would have been up to over the last two weeks. Uh, it is, uh, a lot of work, which is fine. Uh, we've gone through quite a few things over there. Uh, like I said, we've had two meetings with the jail administration, one was with the administrator, the captain, and three lieutenants. And, uh, we identified a lot of areas that we could potentially improve on and work on. We did have a meeting last week, last week, with just the lieutenants. Uh, in the sheriff's office, we brought, we brought the sheriff's office, met with them, we plan to have a meeting with the sergeants, the corporals, and so on and so forth. Um, but some immediate adjustments that we're making, as notified by the captain, that, uh, there's a massive expenditure that we're currently paying to waste management. Uh, uh, Captain Evers did work on that contract and was able to cancel that. That dumpster is actually being removed tomorrow. He will receive another city dumpster. I don't know if it was something short-term or what was going on, but, uh, the budget for that dumpster is about six thousand a year. And the current fees from waste management was two thousand dollars a month this year, so we were going to spend that, uh, at the end of this month. That has been cleaned up, thanks to Captain, uh, Everson for taking care of that. Uh, there have been some, I, I got the first round of, of bills. And we're working through that. I did identify some issues with Summit, they're the food, the kitchen people that we contract with, that provide all the food. I did, I did a three, received three billions from them and noticed some significant errors on their part. I was able to reach out to them yesterday. And we were able to get some traction fairly quickly. Uh, but the expenditures, the overages were in the amount of right around three thousand dollars. So, uh, we're working on that, along with, uh, we're having another issue that was brought to my attention by Mister Gerschewski. Uh, Summit is currently not up to speed on some of their billing, so I'm working with them as well to make sure that they pay out uh, to a contractor that provides them with some supplies to, to get that updated. I actually received an email just prior to the meeting that, uh, I'll be meeting with, uh, Summit, somebody from Summit tomorrow at two o'clock at the jail. Uh, so we're working on that. I, that might be an area I'm going to have to work with, uh, with finance and tax to go through past bills. Because I received three bills and two are extremely wrong, so that's very concerning to me, especially if it's in that amount of money. Uh, we notified a gap with the policy manual, the jail does have a policy manual. And the gap right now is that they are working. They're putting way too much time into keeping it updated, uh, because it's not electronic. It's a three-ring binder that's standard of PDF. Uh, Mister Burkholder and his team currently go through case law annually and update policies. And so I made the decision to, uh, purchase the policy manual with the same company we currently use, Lexapro. We have purchased that already, and we currently have formed a team to go through the manual to make it custom to, uh, the jail. This is a policy manual that Commissioner Ross brought to the sheriff's office, and I still thank him every day for doing it, because it is it is a savior on personnel power and liability, updating case law. So the minute or the day when it happens, we get them pushed out, uh, it's going to be a huge incentive uh, for, for the jail, and I feel like it's really going to help with operations and let people know, uh, well, what they need to do and what they can't do. So we did move that forward already, and we're working on that. Another thing that we made effective as of today, if the one is we pushed out our drug and alcohol testing policy to the correctional center. All but, uh, two C Os have signed off on it. They are currently on F M L A. But as of today, we will be conducting random drug and alcohol tests, uh, at the jail to make sure that we are not having people working there while they're impaired. Uh, another issue that we're going to work on, on improving that have been identified, just I, I've thrown out two emails to the jail, threw one out last Tuesday, notifying them of the change and saying keep business as usual for now, we're going to work through it, just calm down, right? Not very many people calm down, apparently, but I did get a few emails. Last week, I did send out another update, and some of the staff are starting to I don't want to call it warm up to me, but actually send me, uh, some correspondence. And they have identified that there's a que, a request for training. Uh, I am a firm, firm believer that training helps save liability lawsuits and helps massively with retention. So we admitted aware to them that we were going to focus on training. Uh, not only first-line, uh, officers over there, but supervisors and field training officers and the administration. Uh, we're going to start getting individuals over there, uh, to as much training as we can to make them more informed. And, and, uh, I mean, you know, part of that comes from where I came from. Uh, we did have opportunities for training at times. Some training we wanted to go to, but we weren't afforded it until we were in a certain position. But if we know that people are going to be pushed into a certain position, we want to get them that training as soon as possible, so. We're going to push out training. We already have the lieutenants searching for training opportunities in-house, uh, externally, specialized in leadership training, so that's some of our focuses. Very shortly, I'll be, uh, reaching out to all the employees, getting feedback from them. Uh, the basics, right? What's working great? What needs to change? What are your concerns? What are the gaps? Do you like the scheduling? How's the time off? Do you appreciate your sergeants, supervisors, admin? What can we do different? What are you scared of? How are the shifts? All of the things, and I'm hoping within the next, I guess, I'm, if I'm going to be honest with myself, I'll say the next sixty days, I'd like to sit down and talk with everybody that's working at the correctional center. Uh, that does take some time. I did notice, uh, looking through them briefly, I haven't seen them all, but we are going to be updating the job descriptions. I have just looked currently at the top three. Uh, where are we updating them? Some of them say that you're supposed to report uh, to the jail administrator or the captain, et cetera. Some of those, uh, I mean, just the way that I plan on making some, some of the adjustments, I want individuals reporting to the sheriff. Uh, and just so I'm in the loop, it's just a change, there's some wording stuff. Also, we had the, the captain and lieutenants review some of the policies, or some, I'm sorry, some of the job descriptions, and they've identified that there's duties listed that they currently aren't responsible for that others are. So we're going to change that up. Another thing that I, that I did notice is that there's hard dates in there when things need to be completed by. Not a good idea, in my opinion, in policies, and since it falls under the sheriff's office, I'm going to change it. If you need to do something annually, we'll do it annually. It's not going to be due February one, July one, whatever, unless it is something according to federal law. But generally, uh, we're going to look at that. So that is, that is going to, um, change a little bit, and again, I'll work with H R on that. We're working with the lieutenants. We're just trying to, and the captain, we're trying to hone in more on what actually, uh, are your duties? It's easy to write job descriptions. Uh, I lean on job descriptions a little more, because when we look at evaluating people, we do annual evaluations at the sheriff's office. Uh, they're based off of those job descriptions, so. We're going to be looking at that. Another thing, uh, that was, uh, brought to our attention is employee security, just for personnel, that'll change a little bit with the new pod coming up, but we want to make sure that employees, when they're entering the facility and leaving it, that they have secure options and whatnot, so. We're working on that as well. That's, that's not so much of a, like, imminent, that's we'll get that done hopefully in a few, four, five, six months, maybe when the jail opens. Uh, the last one is, is concerning, uh, to me. And I've noticed it for a while with applications at the sheriff's office, and I don't know exactly how to handle, well, I do know one way to handle it. But the current application process, in my opinion, is, is, uh, has a fault in it. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's three different ways that you have to apply it for a county position. You fill out the application, you can apply through Indeed, or you can apply through higher click, okay? So, so we now, people apply, they hit, they hit the deadline. H R says, we'll let you look at these applications as of now. And we get them, and if it's higher click, it's like literally trying to read an Excel spreadsheet that's on your cell phone. It, they're very hard to navigate. Uh, what we ran into actually with this current process. Uh, we're looking higher, I think, seven or eight at the jail. Uh, we received fourteen applications that we're to look at schedule interviews, and uh, if they, it was noted in there that if they do not, did not complete a county application, they must prior to interview, or during interview, or whatever. Well, we use the application to work on scheduling interviews and make sure that they're applicable. Uh, what we've noticed in the past, and I noticed it significantly with our support staff position at sheriff's office, is that some of that information isn't on there, on there, isn't very accurate. We actually had an individual in our pool, in the sheriff's office, that we received, that we, that we didn't offer an interview. I think there was forty or forty-one that were on the list that applied. And one of them was actually a, a relative of one of our employees. They contacted that person, they said they'd never even applied. So, I don't know what's missing, but clearly something is, because out of the fourteen applications that we received, only one filled out a county application. Uh, we directed, uh, the lieutenant that does the hiring over at the jail to contact all of them. I believe this was last week, we told her. Contact all, all, all thirteen remaining. Send them an email with the application and say, please complete this prior Tuesday to today. And as of today, uh, prior to noon, one individual had filled out an application. So we have two out of fourteen that have completed an application. It's not working, and I don't know, I don't know what the fix is. I don't know if, I mean, with techie stuff, like just scratch my personal pickup. Well, the claim agent just texted me, I haven't even talked to them. So like, if it's going digital, then we need to update the digital application and and change it. I don't, I don't think this higher click's working. From what I've seen so far with the sheriff's office and now the jail, like, how do we have fourteen legit that are here to want to interview? And one person after being contacted, because one submitted it, we have one additional person that actually sent an application. So now we're interviewing two. Why do you care about this? Well, it's a problem, but, uh, the way that the sheriff's office does background checks might be a little bit different than everybody else, and we're carrying that into the jail. So with this current process, if we're able to hire two out of seven, your minds are starting to race right now, the wheels are moving. Uh, we do an interview, we do a background that takes at least two weeks, then we give them an offer, okay? Well, if our jail is set to open July one, the new pod, and we're allegedly going to have state inmates in there if this contract goes through, we are not going to be able to manage that with two new C Os. So this could potentially push the contract down the road for the state contract. It's I, I, I think it's a glitch, and, and I don't know, I don't, I don't want the solution is. I don't know if you guys have other options. Some of you have other jobs. Um, I think that we need to look at something different. We're going to have to reopen this, clearly. Um, I plan on pushing it on our Facebook page. We'll try to advertise a little bit more through the sheriff's office for the seal position. But this is your official notification that that July one date might not happen, so. Uh, and with that great news, I stand for any questions? I got one more. Well, I'll, I'll just finish this up first, yeah.
I would say maybe you could, I contact some, uh. Former employees, I think there's some returning, maybe look into that and then. Figure the app thing out. Whoever it has to do it, figure it out. Whatever it takes. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what the solution is, right? I, I'll work with, I mean, work with Ms. Steel and we'll see what the options are. Um. We ju- I mean, just like not physically having this, you get a printout off of a website. Stuff and like, I think it's a pretty clear indicator that out of fourteen, only two took the time to actually fill out an application. So I don't know how those websites work. I've had to look, I, I mean, I've been working here for twenty years. So I'm not in with the new style of planning jobs. But we need, we need to, we need to change that.
Okay, my other point, I, I am ready to address the elephant in the room. Not, uh, not happy that we have a state granted. You can sit down if you want, it's up to you. Not happy that we have a state grant that was bowled. Uh, inexcusable, not acceptable. And we have issues, so. Taking the bull by the horns, so here we go, motion. At the very end, I'll give one caveat. Um, there's one part that's negotiable, the rest of it's not. Motion. The position of jail administrator is hereby deleted from the Grand Forks County Jail organizational chart. And Mr. Burkle's employment with the county of Grand Forks is terminated effective immediately. I will negotiate on the effective immediately. I will not negotiate anything else. And that's my motion.
Employees under the provision of the sheriff's department are um. Hired and fired without the discretion of the sheriff. Uh, the potentially the K club provides that, um, the board of county commissioners may not restrict or remove. The sheriff's authority to hire an employee hired by the sheriff, but through personnel policies which do not serve or simply interfere with the sheriff.
Yes, so if it's up to the sheriff, I think that we should have a, he should know where the commission stands. And then he can decide what he wants to do. So I say, uh, the sheriff to do what he wants to do. I'm ready to support him a hundred percent. That's where I'm at.
We have motion seconds, so it's up for discussion.
Yes.
Um, regarding Ms. Womstead's comments, I don't know. If, if this case is any different and, I mean, it likely caused you to do some research, but I, I have not. I, I understand where it's falling under the hiring, firing, et cetera. I completely agree with that. Um, because those individuals take an oath of office to serve under me. At this point, I have not hired a single person out the jail. Uh, I've not administered oath of office at the jail yet because. I want to go through these surveys and see what is applicable and what isn't applicable. Uh, specifically regarding restructuring, I've already received. Comments and feedback regarding some positions over there. Um, so like to your point, if. If there's a, if we feel that there's no longer a need for a CEO X. I would not administer an oath of office to that individual. So I, I don't. I don't know what, i- if it's any different right now, since I've technically taken over the jail, but nobody's taken over. I don't, I don't know.
Uh, Mr. Snyder, uh, members of the board, um, the case I'm referring to does not distinguish between. Um, non sworn and sworn deputies. Um, it specifically. Provides that, um, I'll read directly, this is from the short conversion. We conclude the sheriff's authority to discipline employees. When it distinguishes between both deputies in the sheriff's office and the board of county commissioners may not restrict or remove the sheriff. Goes on to what.
I said what I need to say. He needs to know what works. You want him to do it or? Need to make a decision or I guess we could budget it down to a dollar.
Chair, remembering the board, I think the, the board could. Make a motion to make a recommendation to sheriff, she gave her that ultimate call.
I will withdraw the motion with a second, withdraw the second. I'll move the same exact motion, uh. Giving the authority to the sheriff Snyder to make the decision.
Right, we will first in a second. Any further discussion for the motion? Yeah, okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Beer.
Fire.
Ms. Beach, are you there?
No.
Mr. Rock.
No.
Mr. Rock.
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Motion passed three, two. Thank you, Schneider, you have some further information for us?
I do. I'll just, uh, provide you with the handout briefly. Madam Chair, uh, I, I did, I believe I made the commission aware that we are working with, uh, the cities of Northwood and Laramore on a law enforcement services co-op. And, uh, both communities agreed. Are you good?
I'm speed reading.
Um, both communities did agree that they would like to engage in a contract with sheriff's office for services. Uh, I apologize, I was working diligently with Ms. Womstead on this contract. And I was also working a while actually in training with consultants in my office to get some numbers, uh, into the contract. To submit to Laramore and Northwood. I was unable to get that in prior to the deadline on Friday, get it scanned in. But, uh, basically what this con- I'll, I'll give you the clip notes. This contract, the base of it. Is the Laramore contract that we've been utilizing the last fifteen years that was enacted by Sheriff Ross. Commissioner Ross, no, sorry. I knew you'd laugh at it. But we took that and we made some adjustments, so it was applicable to both communities. Uh, of note, the city of Northwood is requesting to maintain ownership of their police cruiser. For at least a year after the hire is on their own. So we have a four-month training process. After they complete that training process, the year will start. They will retain that cruiser for a year. Why? Cause it's a fairly new cruiser and if they have a change in council or mayor, or they just don't like the services they're getting. Then they're not out a police cruiser. Um, they're also going to pay for, obviously they're going to pay for, uh. Not everything, but everything to start up the new deputy. Laramore is going to maintain paying for the two that they currently have. Once the individual, the third person is on their own, the cost will then be shared one point five per community. Uh, this was, I did let you know this was, uh, reviewed by, by Ms. Womstead. Uh, to skip forward, we did change the opt-out. It was a thirty day. We switched it to a ninety day opt-out. They wish to cancel the contract. And we did move to have it effective, the, the date that the last party signs the document. Um, it is a few pages. I do understand if you want time to read through it. Both councils meet, I believe, next week. So if you wish to review it and, and address it on the April fifteenth meeting, I really don't have huge heartburn over that. Uh, we'd probably be looking at it July one start date, which is also the day we move into the new sheriff's office and the new jail pod opens. So, I mean, it'd be a great day to start somebody else. I, and that's, that's fine. I, I don't have an issue with that. Um, like I said, it'll only push us back early a week. On getting things moving because the, the other two councils don't, don't start running till next week. The one portion, uh, that, that, uh, this, this did occur under the prior administration. The one, the one contribution, I guess, on the, on the county's part to this. Is that, uh, i- it's related to the vehicle, okay? So, uh, former Sheriff Ross was awarded, they were, he was given the two police cruisers from Laramore. In turn, the sheriff's office and the county provided them with a suitable vehicle and just constantly rotates it out. They paid for all the necessary equipment after that point, service, tires, et cetera. Uh, with this deal, uh, the both communities agreed that they would be fine. If the deputies assigned out there while commuting the fifty miles between each city, did enforce. State law and stop cars or assist, et cetera. So there's a high likelihood. That, uh, those deputies will be performing county duties while traveling between the towns. Um, that would be the only thing that I think would be of any concern to the commission. Is if there's any heartburn over us eventually providing that vehicle to the committees and that can be renegotiated. Uh, that is in the contract as well, so.
I make a motion to approve it, that contract. What's starting to re- confirm the motion?
Well, I can just comment on that quick. So the very first line of the agreement says entered into the first day of April. Which is today. I put it because it, if it, if it's not today, I'll change it to the fifteenth. But it would not, if you look at the last page, it, I can't remember what paragraph it is. Maybe six. Um. Uh, seven. Paragraph seven says that it's not effective until the date is signed by the last party. So you wouldn't need to make an effective date. It's like in the contract.
And, and the reason I do that is so that those council next week know what the commission has done, so I'll second.
I have a question for you. On the, um. Down the road, cause who knows when the thing may not happen, if, um. Because either they're just gonna, these two are just gonna do ninety-nine percent. Laramore, Northwood, except for.
They, I will make it clear to them, as it states in the contract, that. They are allowed to commute the fifteen miles between the two communities. To offer services to both on their shift. They are not commuting back and forth six times unless calls for service. We gotta call Laramore, oh, now we got one in Northwood. That would be the only occurrence. They are not going to be patrolling those areas. You're looking at a minimum of a half an hour a day, down and back. Unless we have two on that, that day, if there's a shift overlap, we could have two working day shift. Then sure, they could swap if they wanted to, but there would be no need to. They could each stay in their community and control it.
And, and I just wanna bring up that. Probably down the road, but if, uh, either one of these were to leave. Then you, assuming you continue when reelection and you wanna work for a while, you would come back, where the sheriff would come back. Uh, cause there should be a discussion about what happens to that deputy. Because then you would be, then if we didn't discuss that, he would be growing. The, uh, you're taken from a contract position to a county funded position. So that should be discussed. I know you do, but I just wanna get that, that should be discussed by the commission before that's done. It, it would follow, yeah, okay.
Mr. Beer, I can definitely address that with you. Uh, the city of Laramore has been utilizing the sheriff's office for police services for fifteen years. Uh, as Commissioner Ross can attest to and I can as well. There were probably more motions to end that contract in the first three years than there were motions to keep it. And, and it always stayed. And, uh, I've been to. More city council meetings in those two cities in the last month and a half than I have at the county commission in the last year. Uh, they've had a lot of meetings and there has been a turnout in Northwood. There's been no turnout in Laramore. Which tells me, keep the sheriff's office coming. As long as they're here, we don't care. We like the services we're getting. Northwood, it's new waters and, and they have concerns, but their, their city council voted unanimously to contract with us. Uh, Mayor Roaring has stated that if for some reason, the city of Laramore chooses to opt out of the co-op. They will be writing a contract ASAP for a mutual, uh, law enforcement services contract, just for their city for two deputies. Which, like I mentioned, could change with, change in the board, right?
I just wanna throw it out there, that, to change if it does that.
Yeah. And that's, that's one of the reasons that I wanted to push it to a ninety day termination instead of a thirty. It gives all municipalities of the county time to, to navigate that.
Right, we have a motion for a first and a second, any further discussion to approve the contract? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Uh, opposed, motion passed, yes.
I'm nothing for it, thank you.
Hey, uh, Mr. Ford?
Yes, ma'am. Um, madam chair, members of the commission, if you can hear me okay. Um, I'll just give a quick update. Um, I would say that, uh, as Leon and I are having a very productive. Um, visit and conference and, um, talking with the chair. I'll just give a quick recap of, uh. Of who, uh, Grace and I have been meeting with while we've been out here on the county's behalf and the subject matter. Um, we'll keep it pretty high level and then, um. We will be more than happy to have deeper, more detailed discussions offline with, with the commission if you'd like. And, uh, Gracie, please jump in if I miss something or, or, or if you have something to add, but. Over the last, uh, uh, day and a half, we have met with the Secretary of the Air Force for installations. Uh, the Secretary of the Army for installations, Office of the Secretary of Defense, the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. The Director of Air Force Operations, uh, we met with the Secretary of Defense for Operations and Energy. We will be meeting with congressional delegation offices tomorrow, uh, so we are keeping busy, trying to make the most of this trip. Uh, subject matter, really that's been discussed in all these meetings has been everything from BRAC. Uh, to the fire station DCIP grant and the billets, uh, that we've been working on with the air force. Uh, in fact, uh, it was a very good meeting with SAP IE, um, and they will be checking into where the air force is at with those billets. Um, worked on, uh, we, we talked a little bit about the counties and their bases, uh, resiliency study. And, uh, we've been encouraged to continue working with Grand Forks Air Force Base on that, which we've been doing and the board is, is aware of. Um, we, as, as we, um, as we wait for the president to, to release his. Budget sometime in May, uh, many of the insider experts think you're, there's gonna be some, some shifting and reducing of funds. And will most likely be seen on the installation end. Uh, which means commu- defense communities like ours will be asked to do a lot more, uh, for the installations, but we. We won't speculate yet until we see what that budget looks like in May. Uh, encroachment was big, uh, and I did have a phone call with Commissioner Rustad today and kinda. Filled him in on that and I'm, I'm gonna send a note off, uh, to, to the commission and I will include Mr. Magnuson and, and Ms. Leon as well. Um, the encroachment discussion was very interesting, um, and we received some very valuable information. Regarding some proposed encroachment issues around the base that SAP is. Tracking and they wanted to make us aware of. I will not get into that here, but we'll have hap- happily have those discussions offline. Um, interestingly enough, with this encroachment, encroachment issue, um, they are tracked, they. Air Force, they are tracking Senate Bill twenty-three ninety-eight, which if you recall, that's Senator Varda's bill. That would have created a twenty-five mile radius, uh, around ins- military installations in North Dakota, depending on the installation. Um, actually, to my surprise, the air force was in support of the bill and its original intent, as you know, it's been amended. Um, but they are tracking that and that was discussed. Uh, and, and through these encroachment discussions and Senate Bill twenty-three ninety-eight in a private meeting. Um, a, a, a former controversial encroachment issue that, that did come up again, um, unfortunately. It, it still gets brought up once in a while, hence why, uh, the, the county is still looked at as, as, um, as a county now. Being proactive and trying to get in front of encroachment issues. Um, the air force is looking at something similar to the original intent of Senate Bill twenty-three ninety-eight. They're, they're discussing a pilot program where they would establish, um, geographical areas of interest. Around military installations and they're gonna be looking for air bases. For, to test this pilot program if it gets far enough down, down the road and it might be. A conversation Gracie and I will have with, uh, uh, the wing commander. Um, and then of course, we talked a lot about our DCIP grants and alternative plans and I, I wanna ask Gracie to. Um, and then of course, we talked a lot about our DCIP grant and alternative plans and I, I want to ask Gracie to update. It was a very positive meeting with Old CC and the fire station. Gracie, do you mind?
Yeah, not at all, so we met with, um, his name is Director O'Brien and some of his staff uh, to, to talk about the dollars that, uh, they have allocated to projects in Grand Forks County. Uh, so one of those being the fire station, we also did chat a little bit about the public schools and military installations, so that's the twining rebuild project that's also under Director O'Brien. And then as well as the, uh, compatible use study or the encroachment topic, uh, any sort of dollars for a study would come from their office, so they have been great partners. Uh, and they continue to be great partners as we were updating them on where we are at with the fire station grant and, uh, you know, updating them on the conversations that we were having about, um, routine staffing and how that has delayed a little bit our original intent for the schedule for the building of a fire station. Uh, they are not concerned at all about, uh, where we are at right now. Uh, they said kind of verbatim, you know, we're patient, we want to see that, you know, the community gets this, we funded it for a reason essentially. Um, they feel good about where we are at in terms of getting an agreement in place with, uh, Grand Forks Air Force Base and as some of you might know, uh, we have seen a draft um, form of an agreement come from the base, but it has to be approved by upper Air Force before we can really start moving forward with things. Um, they also just told us, you know, to keep an eye on changing, uh, other requirements, nothing that would affect us negatively, it would all probably be positive. Um, there have been rumblings, uh, you know, as, as people try to figure out new administrations, there have been rumblings and concerns about the potential for dollars to go away or, you know, what will the program look like in the future and, um, Director, Director O'Brien really, uh, reassured us that he has not heard anything about, um, our dollars or, um, current projects being in any sort of jeopardy, which was great to hear and to have reiterated, uh, and he's pretty confident in the support that currently exists for the, the projects and the types of things that we get dollars from them for. So that all went really well. Um, a fun fact about Director O'Brien is that he does have a North Dakota, well, Midwest connection, he's from Duluth. And so we always chat about UND and then UMD hockey, but, uh, sometimes we get to kind of, you know, rub it in one another's faces, but this time, nobody had anything to brag about with the hockey season ending the way it did, but it was great chatting with them, uh, we're just keeping them and our project manager in the loop on the programs and hopefully actually we'll be able to at some point get them out here into Grand Forks, maybe over the summer when Grand Sky is doing their tenth year anniversary celebrations as their office has been so instrumental for that EOL and then at that point, it'd be great to introduce the director to, to all of you. Um, and so, you know, we can connect and talk about the projects that, you know, are happening in Grand Forks. I got a little long-winded there, but Tom, do you have anything to add?
No, just one more thing about Director O'Brien, Gracie. Um, Old CC is an important relationship for the county because they provided all of the seed money that wound up becoming Grand Sky or EOL, so they have a very best, they have a vested interest in, in the success of the county's EOL and, and the base for that matter. Uh, so they're great partners and, uh, they, they've been great to work with. And quite frankly, without the grant funding that office provided us ma- many years ago, probably wouldn't have an EOL. So, but positive, lot of meetings, some jointly, some of, uh, some, Gracie and I are dividing and conquering in, but, uh, overall, the Grand Forks is definitely the county, the base, Grand Sky is on, on their minds mostly for, really for the positive. Uh, and so other than that, Madam Chair, uh, barring any questions, that, that's all I have.
Well, we also have some other news, you were elected, uh, president of the association in the Upper West Community the other day, uh, Monday, it's Tuesday, so congratulations to you. That's awesome.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, yes, I'm, I'm excited and, uh, great, uh, great opportunity for the county, so thank you for your support.
Thank you for your work, appreciate it. Anybody else have any comments or questions for? Nope. Okay. Um, the Longstead. Committee reports. Mr. Beerkey.
I had a, uh, MPO meeting, they're going to do a aerial survey of the MPO area, which is a little bit out of town, not much, so it's not gonna affect us too much, and then which is, I'm really happy about the following, that we're not rolled in, that it looks like they're gonna try and expand the bus system. So I'll be thrown, so they could lose some more money. So I'm very happy and I can make it very clear that we want no part. So, just doing my part to save money there.
Apparently they were gonna put vinyl with your picture on the side of it.
Well, I, uh, I used to receive the record, I said, the city of Northwood, I'll say it here, if I'm ever killed in an accident or whatever by a bus, investigated as an officer.
Noted.
That's all I have, it's only three minutes.
All right. Commissioner Beach, do you have any things on board?
Um, yes, just to let you know that the PSAP director, excuse me, Shannon Lahays has been relieved of her duties and the PSAP, uh, program is going to go under the fireman's department. I'm not sure, um, I believe that the authority board is going to be absolved and I don't know about the agreement between the city and the county, um, on the funding of PSAP. That's all I have.
Mr. Ford, you took note of that?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, uh, news to me, but I wrote it down.
Okay, well, one of Mr. Peter gets back from Belgium, give him a call.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. Uh, the evening meeting, uh, at the Alaris was, uh, last week. Uh, you were there, Commissioner Beach was there, myself. Uh, very informative on, uh, what's going on in Grand Forks. Uh, this morning I had the mayor's base enhancement committee meeting and over at the Chamber of Congress. And there will be things that will be forwarded over to the, uh, base retention investment committee, which is tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at the Hive. And, uh, had a construction meeting this morning at the jail with Sheriff Snyder. The newbie. That's it. Um, no committees, I didn't want to bring to the board's attention that my motion last week contained a renaming of the Grand Forks County Jail. And after a conversation with Commissioner Ross and State's Attorney Longstead, it seems like that would be an unnecessary move. Um, so I still would like to rename it, but we'll change it to, uh, Beerkey's Big Ass House of Bad Guys. Oh, well, we'll, we'll retain the, uh, original name of the building, not to, uh, so that's my actual motion, not my second.
Or if we have a motion to, to, to.
Yeah, keep it the way it is. Yeah, because I made a motion to change.
We're unmotioning and making a motion. Got it, all right, we have a first and a second. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
Happy, happy, thanks, David.
All right. I had a couple things about the Grand Sky, Senator Hovind was there to announce a new business of Halo out at the, at the facility. Um, also on last night, there was some Norwegian delegation at, uh, the Hive and I might commit to pronounce our names, but Endoya Space, Innovation Norway, New Space North. Talked about what they're doing, um, in their facilities and potentially partnering with Grand Sky. Also went to the EDC meeting like Mr. Ross had said, and then I got to tour the new sheriff's department with Mr. O'Brien. That is what I did. And right, unfinished new business. Yeah, we can have a good mission, we have a notice. Um, that there's probably a vacancy in Judge of number four. Requirement of law, the thing that you know that this is happening, if you have any comments, then you know. So, like, if you have an appeal point. There's no motion needed, but just to. Very good. Right, and I'm gonna be the hinder, hinder annual meeting, anybody would like to go on, maybe?
In German.
Okay, the motion to adjourn.
I agree.
I can follow in favor of the motion.